The Akkadaler Lions.
Oh, that is so romantic!
Well, do you guys have any better ideas? How about?
For what?
Christendom!
Please. Do you guys have any ideas?
Yeah, we can ask the audience for some ideas.
Since we're a newly formed group, there'll be a box in the lobby where you can give your suggestions. Okay, great. Now, what are we gonna sing?
I don't know. Something easy like, uh...
Hark, the herald angels sing!
Yes!
Hark, the herald angels sing! Glory to the newborn king! Peace on earth and mercy mild, God and sinners reconciled. Joyful all he nations rise, join the triumph of the skies with angelic host proclaim, Christ is born in Bethlehem heart. The herald angels sing, glory to the newborn king!
Hark, the herald angels sing! Hark, the herald, hark, the herald, hark, the herald angels sing! Oh, hark, the herald, hark, the herald, hark, the herald angels!
The herald angels sing, glory to the newborn king!
Sing it now!
Peace on earth and mercy mild, God and sinners reconciled.
Joyful all he nations rise, join the triumph of the skies with angelic host proclaim, Christ is born in Bethlehem heart. The herald angels sing, glory to the newborn king! Hark, the herald, hark, the herald, the herald angels sing! Yeah! Jesus is born! The herald angels! Whoa, 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 whoa!
Hark, the herald angels sing!
Hark, the herald angels sing!
Glory to the newborn king!
Glory to the newborn king!
Just was born in Angelay!
Just was born in Angelay!
Santa God is here today!
Whoa, 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 whoa! With angelic host proclaim, oh, Christ is born in Bethlehem heart. The herald angels sing, glory to the newborn king! Hark, the herald, hark, the herald, hark, the herald angels sing! Oh, hark, the herald, hark, the herald, hark, the herald angels sing! Oh, hark, the herald, hark, the herald, hark, the herald! Yeah! Jesus, he was, he was, Jesus, he was born!
Here we come a caroling amid the falling snow. We gather on your doorstep with faces all aglow. Love and joy come to you and to you like Christmas too. May God bless you and send you a happy new year and God send you a happy new year! We bring you simple melodies to bring a winter's delight. We bring you happy tidings to fill your heart with light. Love and joy come to you and to you like Christmas too. May God send you a happy new year! God bless this house and Christmas line with all the season's best. Prepare there on the fireside your home in your Christmas. Love and joy come to you and to you like Christmas too. And God bless you and send you a happy new year and God send you a happy new year!
Thank you. Well, if you lived in the 14th century or perhaps the 16th century, you would be hearing music that is appropriate for the holidays. But in those days, many of the choral groups sang something called a madrigal. And madrigals are most often sung a cappella, which means there's no accompaniment. But before I say that, let's give one more round of applause to these two ladies here. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my wonderful accomplice, Mrs. Faschiano. But right now, we take back 200 to 400 years, and we're going to sing a cappella, a piece called "A Holiday Madrigal."
Sing of a merry, sing of a merry, sing of a merry holiday. A merry, 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 merry. Merry, 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 merry. A merry, merry holiday today, a merry holiday.
Sing of a merry, sing of a merry, sing of a merry holiday. A merry, 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 merry. Merry, 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 merry. A merry, merry holiday today, a merry holiday. All the joy and love abound, hear the voices, music sounding. Sing we now a song of joy, we sing a song of joy. Seize me now from all our sadness, come we now and share it in gladness. Fa la la la, fa la la la, fa la la la. Sing of a merry, sing of a merry, sing of a merry holiday. A merry, 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 merry. Merry, 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 merry. A merry, merry holiday today, a merry holiday.
Ah, here we go. For our next number, we have a piece entitled "There Is Faint Music." Famous choral composer Dan Forrest was involved in his commission to write this song. This is, without a doubt, the most difficult, challenging piece because we have been working real hard at soaking you in and getting you involved in this story. It's a very innocent story about a young infant who was born in a manger.
There is faint music in the night. And pale winds and my silver fly. A frosty hill with tender glow. Of countless stars that shine on snow. A shelter from the winter's storm. A shoreline angel singing more. And Mary singing lullabies to hush her baby's sleepy sighs. Her eyes are fixed upon his face. And he then hears time and space. Her heart is filled with binding joy. For God's own son, her baby born. There is faint music in the night. And pale winds and my silver fly. A frosty hill with tender glow. Of countless stars that shine on snow. For God's own son, her baby born.
Wow, I'm so proud of them. But let's face the facts. Contemporary times, holidays are rough. You know what I mean? The parents have to pay the bills, buy the gifts. We get the decorations. We get the sales, Black Friday, Cyber Monday. My head hurts. This song is a tribute to all of the parents out there who work hard to make their children and families happy. Because let's face it, it's all about paying the bills afterwards, but we won't tell anybody. So please enjoy this piece. And we need a few props to get this going. Ladies, you get your props ready? Oh, they're, I think they're ready to go. This Faschiano, you know, oh, she has them out. I gotta get my prop. By the way, the hat I'm wearing, I got from Radio City Music Hall. A gesture's hat, it's appropriate. And I'm still paying that curtain curtain bills.
All right, here we go, ladies. How do I look?
Dashing through the slush, Through snow that turns to mush. We are in a rush On to Christmas Day. The crowds are most offensive. We are apprehensive Of gifts that are expensive. All we do is pay. Christmas bills, Christmas bills, Paying all the way. Oh, what pain it is to pay! Has it always been this way? Christmas bills, Christmas bills, Paying all the way. Oh, what pain it is to pay and pay and pay and pay!
I hung my Christmas stocking, But no one came unknocking. Santa was out hawking All our Christmas toys. I know I shouldn't let. This gets me all upset. It's what you give, not get, That should bring Christmas joy still. Christmas bills, Christmas bills, Paying all the way. Oh, what pain it is to pay! Has it always been this way? Christmas bills, Christmas bills, Paying all the way. Oh, what pain it is to pay and 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 pay. Pay and pay and pay. Christmas bills, Christmas bills, Paying all the way. Oh, what pain it is to pay and 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 pay. And, and, and.
Gloria, glory, the angels sing, dear O! Gloria, dear, to the Lord we sing! Gloria, dear, to the angels 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 sing! Adoramus, adoramus, adoramus te! Forgive us, young, glory to us! Oh, what is bright, shine on this night, And send us peace! And we are, we are, forever, And we want this all for us to see! Gloria, dear, to the angels sing, dear O! Gloria, dear, to the angels sing, dear O! Adoramus, adoramus, adoramus te! We rejoice, we rejoice, and sing Oh, praise the Lord, and to the newborn King! In heaven, skies with us, in heaven, Christ is born, we're here, we're here! Hallelujah, dear!
Thank you so much. So while we're just putting away these stands and chairs, I would just like to take a moment to acknowledge our students who made the Allstate Festival this past December. Actually, I think it was about two weeks ago in Rochester, New York. So every spring, these students sing an hymn solo, and they are given a grade, and from there, students are chosen to be in the New York State Allstate Chorus in Rochester, New York. So I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge those students who made the festival. I didn't tell them I was doing this. So just give a wave when I call your name, okay? Uh, the first student is Tyler Bromowitz. We have Caitlin Corrigan, alto. We have John Doty, bass. We have Dylan Maybird, bass. We also just saw playing trumpet. We have Anthony Raffaelli, bass. Gabby Sperlaza, soprano. And also Rachel Horwaltstein. And Andrew Williams, bass. And it was incredible to have seven students representing our chorus at this conference, which was amazing. Also have to acknowledge our alternates as well. Aidan Kelly Tenner. Danny Powers, bass. Where are you, Danny? Let's see you. There you are. And Aidan Timpco, bass. We had one student who was selected for All-National this year, which was in Florida this past November. And we had one student that was selected and one alternate. So our alternate who was selected this year is Dylan Maybird. All-National alternate. And our student who got into the All-National Chorus for this year is Paul Loy, bass. We are so proud of them. Our next piece, I think we're good to go. Our next piece is one of my favorite Christmas carols, "We Three Kings." It's a cappella, no instruments. We hope you enjoy.
We three kings of glory and are bearing gifts we travel so far. Field and fountain, more and mountain, following on the star. Oh, star of wonder, star of night, star with royal beauty bright. Westward leading, still proceeding, guide us to thy perfect light. Born a king on Bethlehem's plain, And a prince on Bethlehem's land. A king forever seizing heaven, for us all to reign. Oh, star of wonder, star of night, star with royal beauty bright. Westward leading, still proceeding, guide us to thy perfect, perfect light. To the night, or guide us to thy perfect light. Make us to offer the light. Give it to all prayer, fire. Give sense, owns a dearly high. Prayer and praising, amen, raising, worship in God most high. Earthly gifts to all prayer, fire. Oh, na na, na na, na na! Oh, na na, na na, na na! Hallelujah, hallelujah! Earth and heaven's light. Oh, na na, na na, star of wonder, star of night, star with royal beauty bright. Westward leading, still proceeding, guide us to thy perfect. Oh, na na, na na, na na! We three kings of glory and are born of, born of, born of!
Thank you. The next song that we're singing tonight is the Pentatonix version of "Mary, Did You Know?" And it features two students, Adam Rubin on vocal percussion. And if you've never heard vocal percussion, you're about to hear it. And also a solo by Tyler Halther-Soll. This song is dedicated to my mom because she has been, she's right over there. She's been asking me to do this song for, probably, since I came up here, I think. She's been asking me to do "Mary, Did You Know?" So I wanted to do it this year, so dedicated to my mom.
Mary, did you know that your baby boy has come to make you new? Mary, did you know that your baby boy has saved our sons and daughter? Did you know that your baby boy has come to make you new? This child that you delivered will soon deliver you all.
Mary, did you know that your baby boy has come to make you new? Mary, did you know that your baby boy has come to make you new? Did you know that your baby boy has come to make you strong?
When you kiss your little baby, you kiss the face of God. Mary, did you know? 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 Mary, did you know?
The blind will see, the deaf will hear, the deaf will live again. The lame will lead, the dumb will speak, the praises of the land.
Mary, did you know that your baby boy is lord of all creation? Mary, did you know that your baby boy will one day rule the nations?
Did you know that your baby boy is heaven's perfect lamb?
This leaves each of your whole
This leaving child you're holding is a prayer. Oh, yeah. Mary, did you know? Oh, Mary, did you know? Mary, did you know? Mary, did you know?
Is it, is this a song? Okay, great. Just making sure I covered all of my notes. So before we close with our final piece, I would just like to take a moment to give a few thank yous. First off, I'd like to just thank my amazing colleagues for everything they do to help me. Matt Demasi, Ed Kozlowski, Gina Palatieri, Barbara Lieberman, Therese Manino. Just unbelievable colleagues and friends. I'd like to give a shout out to the middle school chorus teachers, Eric Holz and Danielle Tucker for being here tonight. And being such amazing friends and people. I just love you both so much. Have to thank our incredible accompanists, another one of...
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. Pursuant to Executive Order 202.1 and subsequent orders closing district schools issued by the Honorable Andrew M. Cuomo, Governor of the State of New York, signed March 12, 2020. And due to the concerns of the Board of Education for the health and safety of the community emanating from the current COVID-19 pandemic, there will be no in-person public access to the aforementioned board meeting. And instead, the meeting will be livestreamed and recorded. Access to livestream can be had by accessing the school district's website for a link that will bring you to a YouTube site. And the recording of the meeting can be accessed on www.farmingdellschools.org. In addition, the public participation portion of the meeting shall be suspended by board resolution. Mrs. D'Amico, may I have a motion to suspend public participation?
I make a motion that pursuant to the aforementioned executive orders, the board is suspending the public participation portion of the meeting. And therefore, accordingly, there will be no public participation at this board meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Please note that the Board of Education is interested in encouraging members of public to share their ideas, comments, and questions. You may send your feedback and questions to us through our email account, A member of the district's administrative team will respond to you. And then questions will be publicly addressed at next week's board meeting. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. DeFendini, can we have your monthly update, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Goldberg, and thank you to the Board of Education. So it has been quite a month. You know, we are obviously still, you know, seeing an increased number of COVID-19 cases that are coming into the district from the outside. You know, the numbers are much higher than what we saw, obviously, at the beginning part of the year. We're becoming, obviously, increasingly stressed from a staffing standpoint, you know, maintaining the kind of instructional environment that we expect to be able to provide on a continuous basis for our students. But we are still fighting. And I think that that's the thing that I'd like to share with the Board of Education and the community tonight. The amount of pride that I have and the commitment of our staff to just keep fighting. Even though the odds might be against us, even though it might not necessarily be our fault that we're in the position that we're in right now, we keep fighting. And we keep fighting for all the right reasons. We keep fighting for, you know, this understanding that I think we have collectively that our kids are absolutely better served having a live instructional environment than being entirely remote. And it's certainly not something that we ever want to go back to. The last few months of school, you know, was not our best days, that's for sure. So we're fighting, obviously, to continue to keep that alive. I'm not going to try to pretend like it hasn't come without its challenges. We've certainly had our problems over the course of the last several months. We've had a couple of instances where, based upon the timing or the number of cases, we've had to close down. But it's only been for a short period of time before we've been able to get our doors back open and get kids back to school. It is, again, just another reason to be proud of the work that's going on here and the selflessness of most of our staff members who are doing everything that they do every single day to support kids. I also wanted to share that this evening, a letter went out to the community bringing them a little bit closer to what we believe to be is going to be our eventual reality, which is a possible Yellow Zone designation. Obviously, right now, most of the community's aware that Massapequa Park, Great Neck, Riverhead, and I believe it was another school out on the East End, I believe it was Hampton Bays, have been designated as Yellow Zones. It seems like it's probably something that we're going to have to endure at some point. And as a result of that, we thought it would be best to get ourselves as prepared as possible. Again, I'm going to reiterate what we sent out in the letter, which is we are not, at this point, designated as a Yellow Zone. And in fact, we have no evidence to support the fact that we're heading in that particular direction. It's actually very difficult to even figure out all the metrics that the state's using in order to decide when you are in a Yellow Zone. And when you are, what's the size of the Yellow Zone? What's the geographic region that's going to be designated? Is it going to be a zip code? Is it going to be Farmingdale? Is it going to be Nassau County? Is it going to be the Village of Farmingdale? Is it, you know, it's very difficult to figure out what the metrics are that the state's using. But we did feel that we needed to get out in front of this thing. We needed to get information to our community so that they understood exactly what it is that was being asked of them and to put them in a position where they had all the information that they'd need in order to be able to make an informed decision. And I believe that we did that this evening with the thanks to a lot of the people sitting around this table, the team here at this table, that helped to put all that together, along with our celebrity nurse, Ms. Joanne Kelly over at Woodward Parkway, who took great pleasure in swabbing my nose multiple times throughout those takes to get that final video in place. But for those of you, again, that are looking to connect a little bit more to it, you know, you could certainly take a look at it. It's available through the Parent Link Blast and Facebook as well. It'll also be up on our website for anyone to view it. And the short is that, in the event that we are designated as a Yellow Zone, which seems inevitable, in order for us to be able to stay open, we have to test 20% of the total population of students within the buildings that are within the geographic region that have been designated as a Yellow Zone. And, you know, with the consent of the board and input from the board, we wanted to make this a humanistic process. It's certainly something we've never done before. But humanistic to us gave people the opportunity to make choices. So both students and staff, parents on behalf of, obviously, their children, and our staff members, this is a voluntary process. For those of people that choose to opt in, great. If we can get to the 20%, that's fantastic. If we can't, then we can't. We would have to enter into a remote learning environment. But we wanted to put the power to make that decision largely into the hands of our community. And so people got a bunch of information. Today, they got a seven-minute and 30-second video of myself just kind of talking them through all the different things that probably are important for them to know. They got a video, a demonstration, of the nurse actually doing the procedure on me so that people can get a feel for what that procedure looks like. It's not actually the big scary, brain-tickling PCR-type COVID test that people have come accustomed to. This is called what's called a soft, shallow nasal swab. It's just about a half inch into the nasal cavity. Goes into one for five seconds, into the other one for five seconds. Samples are sent to the lab, and the testing, or the lab will then, at that point in time, do their analysis and send back the results within 72 hours. So we'll be able to meet our requirement. Parents have the choice to decide what they want to do. And parents will also have the ability to be there with their children. So we thought that that was another important component of our plan, is the testing will be after-school hours to give parents the actual ability to be there at no cost. So the entire cost is borne of either insurance or through the CARES Act. So there is no out-of-pocket cost for our community. The last thing that I'll just mention about that is that there is a component to it that allows parents to ask questions through a thought exchange. Again, thank you to Dr. Brennan for helping with that. But Thought Exchange, for those of you that might not be fully aware of what that is, it's basically an open platform where someone can put in a thought, a suggestion, a comment, an idea. And then others have the opportunity to put in their own comments or to rate and review the comments of others. So we, as a district, can get a real good feel as to where the concerns really are in our community. And we will put together a response to any of those, you know, essential questions that are coming from our community and, you know, be prepared to give the community what they want, which, to me, I think, is a tremendous amount of information and choice. Those are two essential components. And next week, we'll be sending out a follow-up, which will ask parents to actually tell us where they are in the decision-making process. Even if we're not designated as yellow, we want to have some preliminary information to understand, you know, whether or not this is something that we would consider, because we're going to get to the 20% or not. And we'll collect some data, you know, over the course of the next week in order to make that decision. So again, based upon our thought that this is an inevitable process, this is probably something really important for us to decide together as a community. Information's in parents' hands, and we look forward to the process of vetting questions and answering questions and getting even more information to people so that they can make an informed decision sometime early next week. And then the last piece, you know, before I turn it back over to the board, is just a commitment to the fact that there's so many other really fun things that are going on. You know, it's, there's a lot of seriousness, obviously, with what's going on. But our staff has really gone above and beyond in so many different ways to try to do the best we can creating the most normal circumstance for our kids that we possibly can. And, you know, from our athletic program right now, which is fully operational through an intramural-based program. Again, it's not the typical competition program that we've become accustomed to. But it's an opportunity that our staff is providing to our students to give them, you know, an opportunity to play the sports that they love. Our club activities, our Roland, you know, we still have clubs all over the place. Most of our clubs are fully operational, and many of them are operational alive. So students can stay after school, you know, in order to be a part of their favorite club. Even things like the musical, you know, which is something that people couldn't even begin to get their heads around. I was over at the high school the other day. It was incredible to watch Ms. Mishki up front on the piano, you know, banging away on the ivories. And the kids are all sitting in the auditorium, spread out socially-distanced, you know, singing away, getting ready for, you know, the musical. You know, we're trying to do the best we can, I think, not letting this pandemic get in the way of us fighting for the most normal opportunities that we possibly can for kids. Had a chance to be a small part and to watch some of the music department and what they're doing, trying to keep so many different traditions alive, whether or not it's the Hallelujah Chorus, which, again, will be alive to some degree. You know, you're talking about different performances that, again, we might not be able to get them all in the auditorium, but we can do it on the field. So why not, right? Let's get them on the football field and figure out how to do a concert on the football field. You know, or even tuba Christmas. You know, we're not going, obviously, into Rockefeller Center for tuba Christmas, which is a multi-decade tradition here in Farmingdale. But we could do it here in the courtyard, can't we? We could dress up the courtyard, make the courtyard look like Rockefeller Center and give the kids, you know, a little tuba Christmas. There's so much evidence of all of that beautiful work. And I can be perfectly honest with every single one of you. I am exhausted. But it is totally worth it. Every time you get a chance to see some of those opportunities, it just makes it all worth it. And there's a lot of people cranking behind the scenes in order to make the magic happen. A lot of people that are sitting right here at this table, straight through our staff, that are just working their butts off in really adverse conditions in order to make this stuff happen. Just tremendous opportunity to be really proud of your school district and the work that they've done. I certainly am. Thank you, Mr. Goldberg.
Thank you, Mr. Defendini, and, you know, thank you to the entire Farmingdale staff. I mean, everybody's been amazing in these unprecedented times, really, trying to make things as normal as possible, which is an impossibility, but you guys are doing a phenomenal job. Everybody's really working hard, and the Board of Education, you know, really appreciates it. Thank you. I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the November 4th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 4th, 2020 regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the November 9th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the, of the November 9th, 2020 special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the November 18th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 18th, 2020 special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Rogers, do we, have we received any correspondence this month?
The Board of Ed received a correspondence regarding a student interaction as well as regarding the National Honor Society.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Are there any committee reports from the Board?
Yeah. You go first.
You're on mute, Kathy.
Okay, if you want, I'll, I'll go first. The Policy Committee has met several times over the last couple of weeks, virtually, and we have a draft policy regulation, 6700, I believe, purchasing on the agenda tonight for, for discussion. The Legislative Action Committee has met as well, virtually, and the committee met to go over what we plan on doing for discussions in the near future with our legislators, with our politicians, and putting together a, a Legislative Action Committee list of priorities in the, the area of COVID and, and what we need for our district. So, we're working on that. The Chamber had insulation and a holiday get-together and social distancing, of, of course. Suzanne, Mike, and myself were actually there at the insulation. Suzanne was insulated, was appointed again as, and installed as a director, and myself as Vice President of Chamber. Proud to do that. And Paul Defendini and the whole entire Farmingdale School District was recognized with the President's Award from Chamber, a very high honor from Chamber with the recognition of what the school district and Mr. Defendini does as a member of our community, for our community, and the, the just ability we have with our businesses and community as well. So, that's a very high distinguishing honor and very proud to say that school district has received that. We also had PTA, New York State Convention, was November the 13th, 14th, and 15th. It was held virtually. Many of our PTA presidents, officers, and members attended virtually. It was a convention that was unlike any other in the past. It was well-received. We do miss being in person, but the business of the PTA, New York State, was definitely finished, done. Resolutions, the bylaws, the elections of officers, workshops, all was done online. And it was a little challenging for three days, but it was definitely accomplished. The, the business of the PTA, New York State, was definitely accomplished, so kudos to those people that ran that. And Farmingdale Youth Council, we had just canceled our meeting for December 15th and because of the rise in numbers for COVID. So, we will look forward to our meeting on January 19th. Hopefully, we can either get together or do that virtually. The state of, the slate of officers, newly-elected officers for the next two years have been published, and Margaret Andrew would be our second vice, second trustee, our secretary, Harriet Bolosky, Vice President Joanne Vasquez, and I will serve as president this year for the next two years. All are welcome to our meetings. The, just check our Farmingdale Youth Council website, farmingdaleyouthcouncil.org for updated information. Soccer program had run their fall program, was able to do that. Aquatics is the only program right now running through, I, I think they might just be finishing up there, but they're able to run their program. Walter Brand with the swim for winter will be running his program. He's going to look for registrations this, two weeks from now, in December. It's all on the Youth Council website and hopefully run his swim program in January, and I believe Aquatics will be running their programs as well. We'll see what happens in the near future as to COVID numbers as to how we're going to run our programs. But Youth Council wishes everybody a very happy holiday and see you in January, and that's all I have to report.
I just have a, a couple of things. You know, we mentioned before the high school National Honor Society induction, you know, for the parents, it was virtual. The kids were there live, socially-distanced, of course. In my opinion, the highlight, Jim Hughes did an unbelievable job as the keynote speaker, did a really beautiful job talking to the kids. I also, we, a bunch of us attended the Albany Avenue PTA meeting, and, you know, besides the regular business stuff, I think that I, I, we need to commend Joe Valentine. He had that one crazy morning where parents literally dropped off their, their kids, and about an hour later, we, we had to start the whole reunification process, and, you know, Joe and his crew did an awesome job. The Massapequa Farmingdale Men's Club, right at Thanksgiving, right before Thanksgiving, we had a food drive, had a great turnout. If you're familiar with Papalardo's, they filled, like, they practically filled the whole dining area with food for the poor. So, and that was distributed, I, I forgot the number of families. I think it was 47 families or something, Mike.
It was close to 50.
Okay, all right. And for those of you that are in the area, you know, right now, the, the Men's Club, the Massapequa Farmingdale Men's Club, we have a, a toy drive going. They're accepting new toys for our local kids. The drop-off box is at Papalardo's again, so if you'd like to drop off a, a new toy for the, for the needy, that would be tremendous. Lastly, we had a, had a library meeting, couple of things. They got, they got a new clock that's now working at the library. The Diversity Book Club, it's not on hold, but they haven't picked a start date yet, but that's coming up. Their staff, they're working in teams now, and they don't intermingle amongst teams. So, you know, obviously, with the spike now, they're trying to keep, take every measure possible. Library hours have changed, again, because of what's happening right now. Monday to Friday, nine to six, Saturday, nine to five. The virtual services are available from nine to nine. Monday to Thursday, nine to six on Friday, nine to five on Saturday. And winter loans are going on right now. Anything borrowed right now, you can hold on till the 28th of February, with the exception of some of the newer books, videos, et cetera, that are available, okay? And we got a, you know, busy week coming up now before the holidays. The Bozzi's Budget Committee will be meeting tomorrow, actually, and Republic Airport meeting next Tuesday. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to report on a committee report? Okay. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 1A through G, 2A through F, and 3A through D. Be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Mrs. Akean, Policy Committee update?
Sure. Good evening to the Board. There's one policy for discussion tonight. Policy number 6700, purchasing and its corresponding regulation currently resides in our policy book, but the proposed changes have also been vetted by our consultants at Goseo and Goseo as well as the Policy Committee. The changes were brought forward to the Policy Committee by our business department after they received an update with recommendations from the New York State School Boards Association. I'd like to provide Mr. Motisi with the opportunity to explain some of the specifics for this policy recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Akean. So, as, as Mr. Akean had, had explained, these policies, this policy was one that the district always had in place. There were some recommended updates to some of the language that should be included in the policy. Very little changed in terms of how we do things. The change is mostly related to what is known as piggybacking, where districts, in order to get the best price possible on when procuring goods or services, sometimes we tend to piggyback off of contracts of other cooperative or other municipalities. It is something the district has always done as a cost-saving measure, and now there is updated language in our policy to support that. And there was some additional updated language that was related to public works contracts.
Thank you, Mr. Motisi. Does the Board have any questions regarding the minimal changes that were made? Okay, thank you. We will put it on the consent agenda for the January board meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good night, everyone. Have a happy holidays and be safe and well.
Happy holidays, everyone.